15th Osage County Commissioned meeting in order. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. Okay. Anything we're missing on here? I think we needed to add an exec for Josh. I can't remember what it was, so we'll put attorney-client for 10 minutes. And then he can state the subject.
I've got one to add, non-elected for 10 minutes, with the topic of capers. And then I'd gotten a message from Chris that he wanted a non-elected for 15 minutes.
For Wells?
Yes, I'm sorry, Chris Wells, Sheriff Wells.
Does that fall under the non-elected clause?
I don't know, I messaged him today, I said, "Are you needing executive session?" He said yes.
I'm gonna put 10-minute Chris Wells, and he will state the...
Yeah, I don't know topic, but he just, that's what he sent back to me. And then, we need to add the 9 o'clock is the BT and Co. Teams meeting. And then, we have, Colleen asked for economic development, she has a request for signature. Is that unfinished business? It's a...
Yeah, it's related to a grant.
Yes, signature for granted. We'll put you under unfinished business.
I have some insurance cancellation docs that I got yesterday that we added.
Gonna have to get a bigger piece of paper here.
And I should also be a 20-minute attorney-client.
For you?
Yeah, and commission Josh.
I'm, oh, sorry, I had one more.
She did throw some bills in there, so we can, those little small hatch bills, we can bridge.
Then I have one other. We had a...
So, is this stuff just stuff that just come up recently, or why is this? Because some of this stuff seems like it should have already been on the agenda. So, this 9:00 AM meeting with BT and Co., I know that was scheduled...
That's just a standing meeting, yeah.
I know that, I'm adding that to Commissioner Coot, Department Head to Discuss BT and Co., do all that at the same time?
That can just be combined with the Department Head meeting, it's the same thing.
Well, it is actually down there already, so I was wanting to add it again.
Yeah, so...
What's that?
It's actually down there, our new business, that's why I didn't add it again.
What's down there?
BT and Co. Services.
Says Department Head up there at 10, and that's of the BT and Co.?
At 10.
Well, that's the Department Head meeting, the BT and Co. Teams meeting's at 9.
Yes, I understand that. So, I'm going to add that in with the Commissioner Coot, Department Head to Discuss BT and Co., since there's two separate titles on the agenda.
And then, Josh had sent me something last evening, there was a coma question about something we did executive session in last week, so we have to follow up with that, so if we could add that one.
I think that could be handled under, if his attorney-client 10-minute?
Yeah, I think he said it would be done in open, though.
The action will be taken in open, yes, but the briefing can be done in executive. Unless he doesn't need much time, then we will let him brief under Attorney Report. Okay, anything else?
The only thing I thought about was like appraiser applications and all that, will we add on that discussion?
Need to pull the rest out, but...
Okay. I'll say, I've only seen a couple, so...
I could make a whole package, just send all of it to you guys.
Perfect, that's great.
You can come in, curious.
Trickling in, yeah. At the speed of government.
Okay. So, that being said, I'll need a motion to approve the agenda with the additions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, public comment. Anybody here for public comment? No, not today? Unfinished business, that's been due.
Can I just confirm, you know, we received this Department Head said 9, you have Department Heads, that's not, I heard you say 10?
Yeah, this says 10, I think when Josh sent that out, he got the wrong time.
I'll be back.
Good morning, Mr. Spears.
Morning.
I do think we only need Josh, but I think we could still move forward a little bit. Just a quick reminder, in September, we were awarded a grant for $27,500 to assist with writing the grant, the bridge grant. So they basically are gonna reimburse us for all costs to write the grant. And we have received the actual contract, and I do print multiple copies just for cost reasons. So today, I'm here to request your signature on this contract. I have already sent it to Josh for review, so is it possible to just approve it if he's okay?
Yeah, I don't have any issue with it, it's a K-Docs per standard. I just wanna look and see. There is some funding. Secretary, 10% of total actual costs, not to exceed $27,500. So there's zero from Osage County.
And Colleen, who were, there's Chase County and, is that correct?
Yeah, it's Co. County, that's exactly right. Try to make it even higher priority for the federal government.
We're not a big dot on the map, is what you're saying.
Exactly, exactly, so we're trying to make it multi-jurisdictional, and frankly, it's very requiring, it's very requiring. Thank goodness Ryan has done an amazing job at already positioning Osage County, and so, but Chase County's in a different place, so bringing this all together is pretty requiring. But hopefully, it will pay off in the end.
Yeah, that's pretty...
And the fact that we were able to get the grant writing reimbursed is significant, thanks to the Kansas bill.
The Department Head's at 10. The Department Head meeting's at 10. The agendas is 10, Josh in Berkeley, at 9.
He's just a lawyer, what do you expect?
Sorry.
Who's your counterpart in Chase County?
Her name is Christine Rhynestud, Rhynestud, I don't know if I'm pronouncing her name right, but she's actually a grant writer, and they have on staff for a time, she's there. But we are liaison through Brandy Southern, so we're like, we're all together.
She's the pivot point.
She is, and she has, she comes from K-Docs, so she...
Speaks her language.
Exactly, exactly.
I understand, yeah.
Exactly.
That's awesome.
She is also the grant writer of our State Streets for All Grants that we were awarded almost $800,000 for.
Now, the $800,000, that was the design portion, correct?
Yeah, yeah, that has been spent six months in purgatory earlier this year.
Right.
Then it was released, and then a lot of people were no longer with the government at the time, so it had to switch hands. We are still working on that agreement, we're getting close. It's been back and forth twice now, as far as the grant agreement, so... They think usually takes 12 months, so we're tracking it right now, unfortunately. It's hard for me to fathom that it takes that much time, at the speed of government.
That's pretty good.
That's pretty good.
This, this is the same language that you showed us the first time around, isn't it? When you came in here the first time and brought about this, nothing has changed from that original format, has it? When you...
No, no, it's, well, I should say this has been new contract, it's part of their normal process.
Right, yeah, gotcha.
Yeah, in terms of the partnership, and the initiative, and the budget.
The scope hasn't changed, gotcha.
Okay, so you were, did you say you needed Josh to approve it? Or, were you it?
I think we...
As long as you guys are okay, he has it. And I think it's requesting all three of your signatures.
So, I will need a motion to approve signing the contract and enter into an agreement for grant funding in the amount of $27,500 with the Secretary of Transportation for Grant Writing Services for the Bridge Grant.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed, motion carries.
Oh, the first one of the day always looks weird.
What's that?
The first one of the day always looks weird, I should have warmed up.
Michelle, are you able to take this original and scan it and send it to me since like, Century hasn't...
She has to stand and sign as well.
Thank you, I will send it to you, then I will also, if you want it, that will be great, thank you, thank you, commissioners, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dana Cunningham of Day, how are you, Sorensen?
Good, how are you?
Good, come on up.
Good to see you guys. Thanks for letting us...
Oh, I appreciate the big writing on here.
The big writing.
Yeah, yeah.
We all do, you know, we've lost this. Yeah, so thanks for letting us come in today, just don't have anything pressing, but wanted to make sure, really, after you come up and just share how it here has been, and have some direction for going. So, if you have a chance to see if there's any questions or concerns or gaps, I'm filled, so. I also have with me Ashley Stoneberger, who is our manager here in town, in the county, and then Monica Williams, the new coordinator with us. We're growing so big that we needed to get more manager and information individuals, and then Lucas Hughes, our Director of Development Team, so, oh, since you're... Lots of things happening, so, biggest thing for Osage County is that we truly are seeing very large growth. I think I mentioned last time I was in here, we're wanting to expand our building that we have in Sage City. So we've officially started and rolled out that campaign, so Lucas is responsible for that, but we've been able to obtain some tax credits from the states. We have about $200,000 in tax credits, they're 70/30, which are really advantageous for a campaign and for individuals to take advantage of that. We have sold about 25,000 of those to an individual Osage County resident, and then we have probably about, sold about 86,000 altogether, so we still have some of those left. We anticipate the building expenses of the month to be about $300,000, and so just looking for raising those funds to make sure that that's not coming out of our operations, that it's covered as we do that. We're on our way to meet those goals, so, big project, we're excited about that, we stopped by on the way here and really looked at how we can maneuver that building and make sure that we get the lead to continue to grow. Because Ashley and her team are doing a really good job of not only providing more therapy services, but they've got groups running, kids at old substance use, and all those things, so lots of really good stuff happening. So, you can see a lot of that in the numbers here, lots of different things that we're trying to report out on, but you can see, we're serving 503 residents. This is from January to September. Last year, 2024, totally, we saw 466 people, so you can see that our impact per person is definitely increasing. The big number there is, you know, almost at 10,000 services, so somebody might get four services in a week, somebody might get one every two weeks, but totally, in those months, it's 9,300, which is a lot. So we're definitely doing lots of different things in different capacities, so that's people coming to the office, that's us working out in the communities, that's us being in all the schools. If you remember, we've got case managers and therapists that go to all the schools in the district, and working very closely, so lots of things happening. The internship number, so those services of 286, that's where we utilize interns to, just to make it more cost-efficient for individuals. So we utilize our interns to serve the underinsured or uninsured. We have a side IP scale that makes that easier for people to have monetary barriers, but our injury will see people suffering, and so we like to utilize that, both in our outpatient services and also in the jails. You can see the staffing patterns, I mean, that's where we have struggled over the years to kind of maintain specifically therapists, but we've had really good luck in hiring some local individuals, and then recently obtained a couple more, just to make sure that we're getting the angle to... And the hardest part is that it's the county's big, like Osage definitely is a whole long ways service area, and so people drive and making sure that we're getting to those locations is sometimes more of a challenge than we'd like it to be. Another really thing, a big thing to highlight is the SUV services, so that's your substance use. If you remember last year and this year, we merged with Corner House, which is a substance use provider, was based in a area, but they also serve Osage County. Prior to this year, we had served about, I think there are three individuals for just substance use, and so we've already grown that to nine. And we just, the whole reason we merged, I mean, was really to grow that program and make sure that we're also providing those services in the out-potting, and so Ashley herself is a new provider, and so she's able to do that, but then also utilizing their resources that we got from the Corner House company to be part across them and grow that program. So we're really looking to expand that, and I think we're also running some, groups are offering that in some capacity to help against some of the downside too.
Can we give you a break that in person?
Yeah, so really nice to have individuals in the county that can provide that service, so that we can make sure we get that need for the future with pretty strong need. And then med clinic, so vice-stationed, we have a house center, has to provide services regardless of ability to pay, which is why it's important to know what your own level are, that's how we use the county appropriations that we get. But then also, we have to provide psychiatric services, and we have to provide emergency services 24/7. So our medication services, you can see that we served 250 clients, and then provided almost 1,000 just med clinic services, and it doesn't really matter, I mean, prescriptions are real, but I just like to see that number, because if you're kind of surprised, like, whoa, that's a lot of prescriptions, but, you know, about every three months is typical cadence for someone to go come and see our psychiatrist or provider, and so redoing those prescriptions is just kind of a large number. And then I always wanna make sure that we talk about, yeah, Roxanne Bush, who sometimes comes with me, and then Ellen Dinsen, as well, as our board members that are representing, or, yeah, I don't know why I said that, Osage County. I think I was telling a story before I sat down.
Probably just thinking about coffee, there's no phone there.
Maybe that's it, I need more coffee, obviously, wake up. So, the other number, I would just say, by the breakdown by insurance type, just let you see the demographic of individuals that are receiving our services, that uninsured number of 83 or 75 last year. So we definitely are seeing that growth in our services, a lot of that's from the Medicaid winding down after COVID, you know, and that's probably that unknown number of what's coming in the politics right now. So, as that number grows, that just means those are trying to compensate it here, individuals that will be more relying on some appropriations moving forward. So, lots of information on that, on that page, and if you wanna talk a little bit about the staffing, you're...
Yeah, we just within the last few years, we have grown, especially with staffing. We are currently full of therapists, which is the first time that I've known how long, making us able to, you know, grow these numbers even more in the next coming year. And there's a lot of other services too that we are spending on and trying to implement, and we're finally in a good place with staffing to be able to do that, so we're excited to see what this next year will be.
And two years ago, we were able to remodel our establishments, so we moved all of our children's programming onsite, where before we had to be in the schools, or we used the train station, and kind of everywhere at times. That's where we have 40-ish kids?
25.
You know, where five years ago, it was probably 12, 20, and so really being able to expand that, and then that moves into your after-school programming, which is a big part of my, you know, moving on, kind of that coordination position, because we run 4:1 staff ratio, so we've got 40 kids, we've got a lot of staff, and so that just becomes kind of undoable for us, we try to manage that. So, it's just a bit of a true testament to how the county has grown and trying to do this. I'm just, I'm talking fast. So that's a lot of information, any questions or gaps that you guys receive, or concerns that we can try to address and make sure that it's on our radar and what we need to do?
Sounds like you got a pretty good buy-in with the schools, or, you know, cooperation with school districts in the county?
School programming is something I would say is probably we've always been very proud of, so some of the things that, at the state level are being pushed out now, I can't speak for all the, you know, there's 24 other community middle health centers across the state, but we have, since I've been here 20-some years, always been in the schools with therapists and case managers now. That's getting stronger, I think the buy-in's getting better, we do have some different programs in different schools that allow us to just kind of continue that and make sure that we're utilizing these resources, or we have a good referral source, we've got open houses that... We've got open houses, they just include us in a lot of things to make sure that the families know we're there and how that works. The school services are really beneficial because especially in our rural communities, not everybody works in the, in the counties or communities they live in. And so if you're working in Topeka, you know, you're taking off half day, full day to get doctor's appointments and medical payments. And so when they're in the schools, we can just go collect that kid, see them and not have that burden of missing work. And now with technology, you can even, you know, a parent could tell video and it'd be available.
Be part of it, yeah.
For those conversations too, and so it works really well.
And still, staff has become kind of like a catch-all for emotional behavior.
Yes, yeah.
So our staffing there in the schools to be able to support that school staff as well and handle those crises that are becoming.
Right. Along those same lines, I, I know you, you're involved with the sheriff's office for sure. What about like the county health clinic? Do they, you guys interact with Jackie and them much?
Actually, Jackie and I were just exchanging emails just because they're more, I don't know if it was personal or related, but. So we definitely kind of coexist together.
Sure.
Worked on projects before, but probably not as intimate as we should be unless there's a specific grant or needs assessment or something that's going on where it kind of pulls us together. But referral source definitely.
There is a handoff, I mean, happening, okay, that's good. And then I guess last question for you guys. Is there any involvement with local churches or anything like that within the county? I mean, formal or informal, I guess.
To a minimal degree, I would say we often partner with, is there something we can do to help you or vice versa? We recently toured our facility with a new pastor in the area and talked about ways of collaboration. When we have our renovations, we're in a new public space to do some group services, so we've connected with them on being able to utilize their space. So just in that kind of relationship.
Sure.
The part of, sorry, the part of Monica's role as well, the, the perfect being able to have her take on some of the supervision of the community-based staff is going to open me up a little bit more to do more of that community outreach. So I'm hoping that's a goal of mine.
I was just thinking of places that catch the, you know, the hurting.
Usually it becomes an informal relationship when I just think of across all the counties of, is there a need that's occurred that they pull us in? Or are we doing some sort of community response or kind of pull those individuals in?
Yeah, so I would say like at our coffee conversations, we usually have several pastors will come from small groups and just talk about collaborations because they're really the frontline folks too.
Well, yeah, their first point of contact, yeah.
Absolutely. And so we've worked, we have had several churches that have said, hey, in my small community, if you guys are here, need a place to do services, call us, we'll make sure the doors are open so that you have a place to be able to meet with somebody here. So there are, there are strong relationships on that side that help out.
Thank you, yeah, that's all the questions I had.
And sometimes it is informal, like, you know, the school where they try to create kind of the community crisis plan. They might invite the ministry alliance where we're sitting at the table with them as we're talking about how they respond to those sorts of things. And that makes me think too, we have hosted an open house this year. Chamber had reported us with, you know, nonprofit of the year, and so they helped, focused with us with the open house. And we had such good attendance by individuals that weren't necessarily already connected to us. You know, new faces, new individuals that were just really excited to see the services we're providing. And the nice thing about coming in the building is you can kind of walk through and say, well, this is how we use this space and this is what we do here. Because most people don't really know the, the full picture of what we do at Crossways. And so it's really nice to have people come in and be interested in and learn about services. Because we definitely know how it is impacting everybody in all the types of capacities, so that's nice.
Very good, very good.
Any other questions or gaps? Always want to leave it with a key or something, and let us know so we can make sure we're addressing that and we can check in with our partners regularly.
All I know is for sure next year, we need to hold Monica accountable, right? Is that what you said?
Yeah, that's, that's all I said.
That's what I heard.
Number one point.
Yeah, that's right.
No, she's gonna do a great job. She already has residents in her previous role, which is why she's good at doing this, but it'll be a, it'll really be a asset to have that extra layer, like Ashley says, so she can kind of focus on those relationships and accounting. That's something that's on my, kind of local as well, is just making sure, I've been trying to get, making sure people know who we are and who to call and get some things.
And even just us sitting here, we just got, somebody just took another $50,000 in tax credit. So we've got some good conversations going and some really good buying in from the community.
Good deal.
Tax credits, if you don't know a lot about them, are really, really nice things, so if you know, someone who might be interested in them. They really do benefit the individual, but it almost doubles what we can, well, you know, we, 7% more of what we can do.
Refund it back to your donors.
Yeah. So that's why we grow their gift. And when we, we got them a couple of years ago, went for our four-year project and we sold them so quickly to state, not everybody can always sell them. So they came back and said, we have this extra time and we were able to sell those too. It's a really nice deal to get rid of them and get them out the door so that we can open up as an opportunity. We certainly don't have the operations to just fund some of these remodels. And if you're literally through like 27% in the last two years of staffing, and so the unintended consequence if you need more space, it wasn't on anyone's radar until.
Nobody wants to share desks.
No, people really like to mess with how their space.
Weird, yeah.
Like the decorations and the pictures of the family. So, but yeah, we have great staff and are doing a good job. And I'm just excited to be able to feel very stable in Osage County with not just the support, thank you for always doing that, but then also just the buy-in and the services that are getting.
Very good. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, it's good to see you.
Thanks for having everybody.
See you too, nice to meet you all.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
I don't know.
In case you forgot.
I don't know.
Next week, we'll come and be like.
See, I forgot to buy my cranberry, Josh. Do you want me to give them an update with BT and Co?
Yes.
Okay, what update?
I don't know.
Well, we have them on the, the meeting.
No, I was just telling them that we were waiting.
Oh, I think it's next.
Was it supposed to start at nine?
Yeah, but that's all right.
Yeah, there was confusion this morning, nobody knew what time it was, and you had nine and we had 10 and.
Oh, shoot, did I send out nine? For department head deal or whatever.
Yeah, the department head's at 10, the nine o'clock was the BT and Co. update with us.
I, I did this.
It's okay, just have them reschedule or something, I don't know, unless they're still there.
They are, yeah.
They're right here.
Yeah, can we just talk to them, they have a few things, I was chatting with them while we were.
Can you hear me? Yes, no, oh wait, hold on.
I think you're still muted, Heather, if you're trying to talk to us.
I gotta figure out how to unmute.
The last time I was, I was in awe, in awe of technology.
Hello, hello, hello.
Can you hear us?
Hi, we can hear you.
Sorry. Okay, I'm gonna just turn this a little bit. So you can see the other commissioners and Josh at the end. Hopefully you can hear us.
Hello, everyone.
Lou.
Okay, and do you just want to go over whatever you worked on this week and then whatever challenges you have to see if we can work through some of those?
Sure, absolutely. Matt, anything you want to leave with or just us take off?
Go for it, Marcy.
Okay, all right. Well, first, I want to open by saying our thoughts are with the deputies and trooper that were injured over the weekend. And their families and colleagues, we recognize it's a really tough situation, you know, appreciate their bravery and scenario, and just wish all of you, you know, strength and healing as you go through this time.
Thank you, we will convey that to Sheriff Wells in his department.
Okay, I'm gonna attempt to, well, shall I share my screen? You're looking at a laptop there, I don't know if you're gonna be able to see, I can just read from it, but if it's helpful to share the screen, I can. I'll just, I'll just, I'll share, you guys just tell me if it's not working well. Okay. So this is the document that I provided to each of you commissioners yesterday, just to kind of quickly recap where, where we've been and where we're going. So I'll run through that, definitely pause me if you have questions and let us know if you have ideas on how to keep moving some of these things forward. So the first item is payroll, we're at, on hold there. We do have an ADP login. We can see some of the configuration and setup around, I believe they call it policies in ADP. But we can't generate any payroll reports, everything I run just produces no data. So I've been in contact with Michelle on that and I, talking with our ADP expert here at the firm, she thinks it's got to be something access-related. So anyway, I, I've reached out to Michelle, I've kind of showed her an example report, what I'm getting. We've exchanged a couple of emails, still working on that, but obviously that's a, a critical item for us to help moving forward in some of the capers questions that have come up. As well as trying to start mapping the ADP into the ledger, supporting the PayCorps mapping, all of those things. It all hinges on getting some access to reporting.
Michelle, do you need anything from the commissioners to get BT and Co. full access?
Oh, hold on just a second, Josh is asking Michelle a question, sorry.
Okay.
I think where a lot of the access comes from is that since the implementation wasn't complete, they're, they're just blank.
Did you hear that? I don't know if Miranda or Kayla was talking.
Is that Miranda, were you the one speaking or was it Kayla?
I, I was, and I cannot hear beyond you, Heather.
Okay, let me mute and then Michelle's gonna answer.
I think a lot of the issues is that the implementation was not done through ADP completely, so those are coming out blank because we've had others have the same problem.
Okay, so you do think that, so what would for me do you have on ADP? Do you have anything from ADP? I mean, I, I'm just blanking line at this point, I've got no payroll data at all, there's nothing.
We have like our payroll register, our deductions, like at the whole total. But as far as like really broke down into what ledger they would have came out of, capers reports are not there, I have to manually do all of them. What else?
Yeah, that's definitely the information we're looking to start reviewing so that we can help define, yeah, what the ledger should be. What, do you have a recommendation on the best way for us to get that? I guess we were maybe thinking we could still see some of those reports in the ADP, even though the configuration hadn't been set up, it sounds like that's not the case. So yeah, do you have a recommendation on how to get that sort of information to us?
We might do a conference call later today and I can just call their support line and maybe between the three of us, we can give them the do what we need them to do.
Do you have a time you want to target for that or if you need to look after this, just let me know and I'll see what I can do.
I'll send you an email after we're done with the meeting and we'll make sure to work.
Sounds good, Michelle, thanks. Any other questions on the payroll piece? So I mean, that, that's where we're at.
Well, I'm back on now, if you can, okay, good, okay, thank you.
So that's payroll and ADP, PayCorps, that's the next step is building out that, what's?
Josh is asking about PayCorps, if you've had any movement on building that out?
So we have not yet requested any access with PayCorps, I, I'm not sure that we really even need to. I think first we need to review what's occurred in ADP, provide some direction and recommendations on, sorry, directions is the wrong word, recommendations is what I meant, on how to map that to your GLs. And then I think that same information can be leveraged for the PayCorps process. So I think if we start with the ADP definition first, that information's gonna leverage at both places. So we've not directly contacted, but I don't, I don't think we need to at this point.
So the last communication I have is November 7th, reaching out to follow up on a schedule for a data exploration call. Has that call happened yet?
Yes.
Okay.
We have, we have another one coming up, pulling stuff in and loading the documents that we need to have, what we want electronically signed and what we don't. What's required, what's optional.
Do they have the census data?
Yes, I think they've wanted so far. They weren't quite as concerned because it's gonna be a fresh start. The stuff from 2012 or 25 is not gonna affect them.
Is there any downside to copying BT and Co. on that PayCorps implementation thread? I'm just trying to think.
Josh is asking if it would work for you guys to, for Michelle to copy.
I can do it.
The implementation data with, with your company.
No, copy BT and Co. on a thread just to bring everybody in the loop.
You mean with PayCorps?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'll do that unless somebody's gonna yell at me.
Yeah, do it.
And then the third issue was capers, but that's dependent upon ADP, is that correct?
Yeah.
Everything is manual calculation.
Yeah, so it sounds like until they get those reports, they don't have access to the capers data.
Okay.
Is that correct, until you get certain reports?
Right, yeah, we just need to be able to see, right, we'll, we'll kind of look at, okay, where did we cut off with capers? Pair that with the ADP stuff to figure out, okay, well, where do we have to go next and just get everything reconciled out? Make sure we've got a clear cut where things were last remitted, where we need to pick up, all those sorts of things. So yeah, we need reports.
All right.
We might also need access into your, your capers login information so we can run some of those reports from there. That was the thing I was thinking of. Okay, yeah. That's preferable, we could do that. I think I said if you wanted to send them to us, but if it's preferable and easy enough to give us access to the portal, we'll gladly take it and get what we need.
So direct login to capers and then the Osage County side is, where, where does that data exist now, in the payroll registers?
They're all in a.
It's not an ADP, correct?
You can generate it now in ADP if you want to, but as I do payroll, I save them into my report and stuff.
Well, that might be a good way to decide if it's an access issue. If you are on the screen with BT and Co. can generate a report and they can't, then that would show that they don't have the permissions. Yeah, so the capers, I know that was at least one of your concerns this week. That people retiring are not showing up payment since May. And so it's affecting their retirement.
How many people is that? Do we know that? Because I checked my capers and they said all my payments are up to date. We don't know if there's a lot of people like that.
It's all ours. All of ours happens. And I talked to them, they said.
June was the last, because that's when they made.
Say that again, Chris.
When I talked to capers, she said it wasn't a problem, that it would be resolved at the end of the year.
Right, that's what I was, I was, I mean, pretty much the same thing, she said everything thus far is up to date.
What would be resolved at the end of the year? What would be resolved at the end of the year?
They would send something to Michelle to basically, this is what you owe, you have such and such type of.
Oh, okay, so they're, they're getting the data, just not the money?
Yes.
That's good news.
She said that if we retired her, that it wouldn't affect anything, that she, Michelle, whoever. She said that if we retired her, that it wouldn't affect anything, that she worked with Michelle, which like whoever.
Okay.
I have, I have two that are retiring December 1st, and Lisa went up, she can't see what her monthly wage is gonna be though right now.
I can give you a number to learn about it if you want.
She was super helpful.
Okay.
Did she create a login and all that stuff to their website?
She went in person.
Yeah, she has all that. Yeah, but she couldn't get any further than, you know, like, well, we have to have the information to show you what you're gonna be, because we don't have the most recent deposits.
So it's sporadic as well?
Yeah, it's not a blanket. It's... Well, I think between the payroll registers, what we think we've withheld, or what we know we've withheld here, it's sitting in an account ready to go to capers. And on the capers side, a direct login, I think staff and BT and Co could maybe match those up and get that. But it sounds like it's tedious if it's manual.
It is.
But if ADP already has that information...
Especially where they did the adjustments, it totally throws it off, because they'll fill out a template, and they don't match, because...
What is the alternative, what would you expect in an ideal world for capers that's not manual?
Basically, all I need is first wages and what the employee paid for contribution. That's the only two things I need.
I know, but when you say it's tedious and it has to be manual, is there an automatic process? Like, does ADP or PayCorps say that they do it for us?
Yes, they will do it for us, but ADP does not have it set up correctly to where it's figuring it correctly.
So hopefully, we're just doing manual for 2025, and then PayCorps built out.
Should be.
And they just send checks. Then the fourth issue was the state employee health plan, open enrollment is live. Okay, and that closes?
Probably December 19th, I think.
Okay, so it's a short window.
Thirty days.
And we've, no, I don't think it's 30 days. I thought it was like...
Yeah, well, if you got it.
November 10th to December 18th, or something like that.
Oh, it's to December 18th?
I think, depending on the email, I think. I'm not sure. I'd have to look again, but...
They had told me that...
I believe it's the 18th. I just looked at it, because I was looking for my sign-in number.
Yeah, and I think most, well, some of the employees I've talked to have already got theirs, and I think some may be waiting on it, some of them, but...
I did send out a bunch yesterday, because I got their whole list. And so they should have went to, I tried to do department heads to kind of go through it.
Make sure it gets disseminated.
Make sure that it's...
Since 11:13 to 12:18 in the membership administration portal.
There you go. Yep.
I don't like to speculate.
We had been discussing an earlier date, because they said they couldn't, couldn't go that far, but I guess they can. Good for the state.
Okay, where are we at with the rest of this BT and Co conversation?
So, are you, is, do you have everything with payroll that you wanted to discuss and go down?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, we can go ahead and jump to accounts payable. That is another area where we're waiting for access. This is again, we have made first contact with Helix, and RIT said, okay, we need to know this information so we can support it, and we're still waiting to hear back on that. I sent another follow-up to Sam. Just, I mentioned that, you know, I really needed to provide an update on where we're at. I know this is an important priority for the commissioners, so still waiting for that. Again, we need, we need information before we can start kind of combing through it, understanding what's happening. As a quick extension to, so, right, the access is probably the most critical path that goes to the payroll and the accounts payable. But shortly thereafter, we're gonna need bank statement access. We can start looking at some things with just the access in place. But we're gonna pretty quickly need bank statements, so if we can be thinking ahead about the best way to share those, that's gonna be really helpful.
What's our options on that? Hold on just, what is, what's our options for that? Sharing bank statements, is that just, are they all electronic?
Because Linda would come back here, she was, she was more on that than I was, so...
Well, let's just figure out what we can do and how we can provide them what they need, and we'll be ready. I think that's the best course of action.
All right.
Right, in general, accounting issues. Again, a lot of that will flow through once we start looking at the accounts payable, we get some CIC access. I did go ahead and request, I sent this to Michelle, and Michelle, of course, if anything comes your way that you're like, that really needs to go somewhere else, just let me know. But I did say any completed balance sheet reconciliations, whatever the last date of those are, it's a helpful starting point. If we can start sharing those, that would include banking and just other general balance sheet accounts.
Another large issue is Century Business Technologies right now. We had a lot of problems yesterday. Springs were blinking on and off, it was multiple offices. That ticket was put in fairly early. I finally got a call back around 11:00, and we felt it was tight up, we couldn't talk to them. But it just, they don't want to give us much access to anything. Printers aren't wanting to connect, that we're having those issues before.
What?
We're not getting all the rest of the emails, we get quarantined, get kickbacks.
Okay.
So that's, that's been a struggle too, to get, they can't seem to do anything with CIC. So that's been a holdup as well.
Well, it sounds like Linda is...
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Did you have a question for Michelle?
I, I did. I kind of heard some of that. I thought you were saying you're getting some email kickbacks, or were you having difficulty getting some things to BT and Co, or is that someone else?
It's various people.
She says it's various.
Okay.
It sounds like Linda is, is, has prioritized the AP side, correct? And she's not working on the payroll side at this point?
No.
And then there's also at least been a request for her to continue on the treasurer's side?
She's on her way down here.
Okay.
I think we have a really good plan and handle on ADP stuff, just because we've worked so much through it, that... It's just a process, but...
Okay. What's the thought on... What do the commissioners need from BT and Co as far as updates in the coming weeks?
I'm bi-weekly. Like, weekly is a little too...
Yeah, well, we just, we had chosen weekly, and then if we felt like we could taper it off, we'll taper it off. Just each week, you know, what was accomplished, if they had challenges, and how to work through that. And just that way, then if they need decisions from us, we can make them, you know, right at the time. We're here. They had, they have a couple other little things on there.
So I heard weekly and bi-weekly.
Well, we have another 10 a.m., so we kind of need to get this processed through, but...
Yeah, bi-weekly is fine unless there's a big to-do it. I mean, if there's something special...
Right.
You know, something came up. I mean, if there's a fire to be put out, obviously bring it up.
Right.
I would say, in my opinion.
Bi-weekly updates unless there is a issue that needs attention immediately.
Okay.
In which you can reach out to us all, obviously separately, and then, you know, come to me and get on the agenda.
So the next, do you want them to come on December 1st at a certain time?
Two weeks from today.
Or December 2nd?
So December 2nd is when we're saying we'll next get together as a schedule?
Yes. Do you have, is there a time that works best for you, or do you have a preference on time?
I don't think so. I think, I mean, this works, but we can change if that's better for you all.
You said doesn't.
9:00 a.m. is not what's...
10 a.m.
Just opening the meeting, and we have business, so yes, 10 a.m. would probably be preferable.
Okay, so we're gonna set that for 10 a.m. on that December 2nd?
Okay. Do you want me to own that invite, or would you prefer you kind of...
Please do.
If you send it to us...
Okay.
Yes, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Yep, okay.
And I will try to send you something, like I did yesterday, that, hey, this is, this is what we got going. I'll try and give you a preview, so then you can be prepared. Anything else that you want us to hit on? I mean, I think you can peruse the rest. I think you get the gist of where we're at.
Yeah, on the audit, on that communication letter, I did find the electronic version. I went back through my emails.
Okay.
So I had the electronic version of the audit and that communication letter, so I can forward that.
Great, yep.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Sure, thank you all. All right, we will talk to you on December 2nd.
Thank you.
Michelle, looking forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Did you say you needed five minutes for something?
Yeah, I do now.
Five-minute exec?
Yes.
Okay, call it, please.
Attorney-client, legal advice related to county contracts.
For five minutes?
Yes.
With Josh and I and all three commissioners, we will return at 10, call it 10:01. So moved.
Say it.
Motion's been made in second, and I'll move in favor.
Aye.
Aye, pose.
Okay. No action, take that executive session.
Okay, so one order of business for giving us real quick. I will move to approve, I will move to approve Helix Technologies to handle the transition in IT services for the next three months from Century, whether Century Solutions or Century Technologies.
Century.
From Century to a three-month period to get us in position for another RFP for IT services.
So it would be based on his previous con, or offer contract?
We will have him form a contract presented next week for signature, if it's approved. But that's my motion, so we can put a band-aid on this, get somebody we know and trust to move us through this transition, and then three months.
Three months, is what you said?
Yes, sir.
I would like to have more discussion.
We can discuss this later in the meeting, I reckon, if that's all right.
Okay, there's a motion on the table. No saying it. Motion dies for lack of second. Take the key a little further. Okay, department head update. Thank you all for coming.
I was gonna see if Josh would just go over the email he sent out, and just give it a little review.
Yeah, first of all, I'm sorry for the getting the time wrong. It was late night at the Canvas last night, fat figured 9:00 o'clock. So I apologize if you were here at 9:00 and I wasn't. But I think ever, most everyone has kind of monitored the discussions and provided feedback. BT and Co, some of you might have seen, was on the meeting today to provide their first update. They're engaging on ADP side to wind down 2025, and soon to be PayCorps side. I just sent an email looping in the PayCorps team in Michelle's office.
No action taken at the executive session.
No action taken at the executive session.
No action taken at the executive session.
No action taken at the executive session. Okay, so one order of business for giving us real quick. I will move to approve, I will move to approve HELEX technologies to handle the transition in IT services for the next three months from Century. Whether Century Solutions or Century Technologies.
Century.
From Century to a three-month period to get us in position for another RFP for IT services.
So would it be based on his previous contract or offer?
We will have him form a contract presented next week for signature if it's approved. But that's my motion, so we can put a band-aid on this, get somebody we know and trust to move us through this transition. And then, three months.
Three months, is what you said?
Yes, sir.
I would like to have more discussion.
We can discuss this later in the meeting, I reckon, if that's all right.
Okay, there's a motion on the table, no saying it. Motion dies for lack of second. Take the key a little further. Okay, Department head update. Thank you all for coming.
I was gonna see if Josh would just go up with the email he sent out and just give an auto review.
Yeah, first of all, I'm sorry for getting the time wrong. It was late night at the Canvas last night, fat figured nine o'clock, so I apologize if you were here at nine and I wasn't. But I think most everyone has kind of monitored the discussions and provided feedback. BT and Co., some of you might have seen, was on the meeting today to provide their first update. They're engaging on ADP side to wind down 2025 and soon to be Paycor side. I just sent an email looping in the Paycor team in Michelle's office. And others to just make sure on the Sage County side, we're getting all that information so we can start 2026 fresh. I've been kind of, and the commissioners too, and Michelle, I'm sure, have been receiving various things from your offices as far as actual problems, perceived problems related to different things. And so this conversation, it was my, I wasn't here last week, but it's my understanding that this conversation is just to update you that commissioners have engaged BT and Co. You may be contacted by Miranda Dick or Kayla Williams. They've got another team, Matt, team member, Matt, I think is the project lead. The Kayla, I think, and Miranda are on boots on the ground. To try to get issues addressed. The ADP process and transition has not gone well, and that's why the commissioners elected, my understanding, elected to go to Paycor, as you all know. Connected with that is the regularity of paychecks. I know there was a lot of discussion, some consternation earlier in the year regarding moving from monthly to bi-weekly. That's, my understanding, is still the plan, but it wouldn't be implemented until 2026 when Paycor has got all the information they need to disprocess this and hopefully all the tools of the modern Paycor payroll systems that they provide, including automatic payments to capers, health insurance, IRS, Department of Revenue, Department of Labor. We can kind of leave 2025 behind us. Anything else you wanted me to address? AP processes and CIC, I think, are going forward with, as a separate process with Linda and within Michelle's office. So she probably can address some of those things. And then the last thing that was on the email was just working towards development of a credit card purchasing card policy for the county that would just make sure that we have all the documentation that we need. And then, the one thing that I noticed that may have been contributing to some of the, you know, reiterations and different iterations of a policy of how to process this behemoth, you know, county-wide, one bill that we get from UMB Bank. I think that there are ways that UMB can provide those bills separately to your departments, and then you're able to just code yourself and annotate a voucher and go into a voucher-based system where you have a face sheet categorization for each of the fifty-two-hundred, fifty-three-hundred, whatever it is. Then on the back, you've got kind of a breakdown, if you want to run a report in CIC, you can. If you don't, at least put the receipts on the back end and have the coding. I think that that's kind of been a lot, drinking from a fire hose from the county clerk's office, of trying to do that. And I will admit, I don't know what the process has necessarily been, and it might have changed a few times, but I think to standardize that and to receive your feedback on how that could best, you know, we're balancing department heads having authority over their budget, department heads defending what they're using, you know, their budgets on, and then the accounting side of that to make sure that books are right. You can see reports and CIC and manage your budget. And then on the administration side with the clerk's office, with commissioners approving those vouchers to make sure we have the data inputted into our accounting system and CIC that we can have regular reports and more timely approval processes from the commissioners so that before, ideally, before money goes out, the commissioners are signing that. The problem with credit cards is anytime you swipe at the gas station, because you're at a conference or something like that, the money has already gone out. And so we're paying on the back end for something that's already been, from a legal standpoint, you know, we're already indebted to the credit card company for advancing us the money. And so from a credit card perspective, just inherently, the commissioners are not going to be approving that before you make that purchase. But if there is some question regarding that purchase, creating a policy that would allow commissioners to kind of review that and, you know, as needed, manage, so to speak. Did I get everything close to all your legalese?
Yeah, and I will tell you, last week, when we did bills, there was two separate bill packets. And one of them was just the sheriff's office and had the report. And then they had a voucher for every receipt. So I think they're doing.
A voucher for every credit card receipt?
No, no, not credit card, just in the bills. We got a bill report, and then there was all this receipt, statements, all that. And then there was a voucher. So I think maybe they, their office is doing that. That's the first time I've seen it in that manner.
Right, and.
So the capability is there for the department.
They can't do that if we do every batch separately. Every single batch has to be done separate though, every department.
Well, I think that's getting the cart ahead of the horse. It sounds like Sheriff, you have a process.
Would you start this last?
Yeah.
It was the first time I've seen it, but I, yeah.
I think, though, and I don't want to put a timeframe on it, but I, there's lie at the end of the tunnel to have a county-wide department head process to make it just easier to input this stuff. And it's already in CIC, it's already coded. We just, to date, it seems like we haven't really taken advantage of the full capabilities of CIC. At this point, the, you know.
I don't know if you're gonna get to this and jump again, but do you guys have rules on one day with the on-premise cards?
That is the next question. No, please don't. The voucher system, I just want to put a bow on that conversation. Eventually, hopefully, we get to one process. And there's hard copy voucher, face sheets. There's what, I guess if you had to describe the current process, it's, some department heads send you vouchers and others don't?
And vouchers get put in there after you guys approve it.
So you create a voucher?
Yes. The problem with doing that before is we would have somebody not approve them, and then I would have to go back and back them all the way back up. And it's very, very time-consuming, and then reprint everything again.
Well, all, what I'm envisioning is some sort of summary from department heads that just has a face sheet of who do you want us, who do you want the commissioners to pay? How much? And how should it be inputted into the accounting system on the breakdown? And even if that voucher is kind of a preliminary hard copy that you use as a summary report to then input, that's kind of the manual hard copy, old-school way of doing it. I don't want to get ahead of ourselves and say we're gonna start, everyone's gonna be inputting into CIC. I was just imagining that's a functionality, that you can have something like a digital input into, from the department head level that's preliminary, and then you, somebody approves it. So all I'd say that on the voucher side, we're not there yet, but that's what this conversation is for, is what's working, what's not? What have you seen, what have you not seen? I know, Kelsey, you indicated that there was a Jayhawk, some other.
That's the software that we're using. But I will say that when Melinda was doing bills, I would submit my bills, my statements, my invoices, and then Melinda would code them and put them into her system based on what I had entered. And then before they ever got submitted to commissioners, she would have, she'd either bring it up to my office or we would go downstairs, and I would be able to compare this voucher, this invoice, and I would make sure she had paid them on the client item, the right, you know, invoice total, et cetera. And then I sign that authorizing, yes, this matches. So then I.
So you would not code?
No, I coded, and then she coded, and then we compared the two.
Yeah.
So then I knew, in fact, these bills have been entered, these bills are being paid. What I submitted is what's, it all matched up. And then I signed her voucher, and then she would then submit that package to the board. So that was the easiest process.
And I could catch if something was coming out of the wrong account before it was approved and the money was moved. So, because if I look at some of my older bills and stuff, some that were supposed to come out of a certain account came out of the equipment fund, which.
Well, you, as department heads, I'm, you know your budget and your funds better than anyone else, so.
Yes, but we are coding bills, and then they're getting entered in different line items. Yes. So now we're correcting things on the back end instead of correcting things on the front end.
Have you seen that at all, Linda?
Did you let us know? Yeah, I was gonna give the emails to Michelle, saying I believe these were fully drawn between the corresponding invoice and.
I think the problem that they're doing is we try to keep the fifty-one-hundreds are wages, the fifty-two-hundreds are contractual, the fifty-three-hundreds are commodities. And we didn't run a report through the whole county like that. But when they don't follow that, it doesn't feel good.
But it's not, if I'm submitting it, that's my discretion as a department head. It's not your discretion to change what I've decided that needs, needs coded under budget lines. So that's.
But then they're not consistent.
Well.
There's only three options, so I don't really understand where the confusion comes in. You have personnel, contractual, and commodities. I don't really understand where the confusion comes in. Everything that is not a contract would go under commodities, because we don't do anything with personnel, really. I mean, a level of item. Mine is written for each, um, share, because they are more on personnel. There's more technicalities, but.
I just would think that you would have coded as we have coded it, and if there's a question, then that would be for them to question us on or for you to bring to my attention, hey, this is inconsistent, but I don't think they should be changed once they leave my office.
Well, that's a probably a good question for the commissioners.
I think that's where the voucher comes in, because she said she confirms, right?
Well, and I understand things may not make sense, but, you know, when I'm buying things that are disposable, while I understand that's a commodity, it's for a jury trial, and so that comes out of my contractual jury trial budget. So some things that you may not understand, I'm coding for a specific reason. And when you just determine on your own that you're gonna change them, that, that wrecks my budget, and I can't keep track of it. So some decisions are made on a department head level that you don't need to understand because it's not in your budget.
Well, I understand what you're saying, and I agree. But one of the issues that we did run into in the past is people were coding things from different lines just to keep the line from going over. So there needs to be an understanding between, because she's a hundred percent right. If she codes it like this, she needs, that's how it should be paid. But then your understanding is a line item, which I know you understand, so don't, I'm just explaining, over explaining. If you have commodities in your contractuals, and you've got to pull something out of commodities, and it's gonna put you over in that line, go ahead and do that. Pull it from that line, because ultimately, it's not gonna hurt your fund, as long as everything shakes out.
I think that's the understa, right.
That's the understanding, right, that was kind of missing, and that's what we talked about early on. So as long as everybody that's coding things understands that, it's a line item. If it goes over, it's not a big deal. Your fund total is the one that's the big deal. So as long as you continue to, because we had some offices that they were, they were, oh crap, I only got fifty dollars in commodity, so I'm gonna pull it out of contractual. You said, I'm saying, they were doing that. And you give me a funny look, but I saw it with my own eyes. And so that was one thing we were trying to fix. So as long as that's the understanding, then yes, they're coding them, and that's exactly what we wanted, was everybody to cover their own stuff, and then you just pay it from there. And if there's a question, we handle it from there. That's part of the financial cost.
The goal between commodity and contractual is that when you get ready to do your budget, you wanna know what's a commodity, what's contractual. That's, that's when it comes into play. When you're trying to fix your budget, and if you put things in both places, wherever you want, really nearly, and you're not consistent, then whenever it comes time for you to, and we print a report and say, here's your report, and you look at that, and you go, well, this is what I spent on commodities, and this is what I spent on contractual. That's not true if you encode them consistently. So you can't create a new budget for twenty-six, twenty-seven. If that information is junk in, junk out. So you're the exception, probably, than some of the rest of those. But that's our goal, and we're going to go to a K-MAG school, and that's gonna require some changes, probably a degree of bridge more than. Because in order for us to produce K-MAG reports for the auditor, our chart of accounts has to be in a certain format.
Yeah, I would think that ultimately, the budget and the books are the commissioners' responsibility.
Right.
So if something's wrong, even though it's a preference on, I mean, some of these contractual services, commodities, like, it's a coin flip. I was looking at utilities the other day, and I'm like trying to figure out on tax code whether, you know, are you buying the gas, are you buying the service, the pipes, what do you buy? And so it's, sometimes there's a judgment call, but ultimately, I think you guys set the categories that you expect. And whoever your agent is right now, Michelle, needs to have the ability to conform the books to how you want, based on what, frankly, what the auditor expects and what K-MAG expects.
Right.
That doesn't necessarily have to limit department head discretion, as long as it's legible that when we're talking about contractual services, we're talking about contractual services and not wages, because those are different things, different line items. So I just, it's more probably a breakdown of like, there's a lot of wonky, I mean, when I review these bills and I see fifty-six-hundred or fifty-five-hundred, and they're just random coatings, and I don't know if it's a sub-coding or what of commodities, but you're right, there are really only three major things that we're talking about, which is it's either ten ninety-nine, W-two, or it's, or it's a commodity.
Like, we're achieving some, achieving some. But they would be like based on, if a commodity is gravel and rock, they'd all be in a fifty-three-hundred code.
Yeah.
And then auditors pull those fifty-three-hundreds into commodities.
Because you can have sub-accounts.
Just for gravel. But what you could do is, if gravel's a commodity, you could do fifty-three-hundred as a standard commodity, and then fifty-three-oh-one would be gravel.
Yeah.
Fifty-three-oh-two.
Because they got gravel, like, asphalt.
Yeah, and those are all mine, they just need to be in the fifty-three hundreds. You can't use fifty-four-hundred, fifty-five-hundred, because fifty-four-hundred is designated as a secret. Fifty-five-hundred might be designated as something else. So if you're using this, if different people are using the same number for different purposes, then your K-MAG report can't pull together. So it has to be consistent, kind of like yours and utilities. If somebody does utilities as contractual, and somebody else is doing utilities as commodities, well, then it would be max for the commissioner, what is utilities? What is, you know, what, you know, telephone cell?
Right.
Are these utilities, or are these contractual or commodity?
Well, and that's all nice too at the end of the day, because we need to budget in that fund for that agreement, then that way everyone knows. Because in my mind, yeah, it's a commodity, but it's also contractual, because you're contracting with the people to provide that service. So we just have to pick which one we want to have that money's budgeted into. And then you tell everybody, utilities are coming out of contractual.
Commodities are products, services are, contractual services are services. And I was just using utilities as an example of.
The gray area.
When I was, I looked through this, and I'm trying, because I'm doing the same thing. I'm up here and saying, no, that, we can't have the same invoice, the same vendor as fifty-three-hundred for April's bill and fifty-four-hundred for May's bill. Like, let's just get it together. So I, that's where I, I don't know how that's ultimately gonna, it sounds like there's more build-out that we want to do, but ultimately, that's, it's all CIC. And how we get that initial data from the department heads, that's one question I would have. I mean, I've seen it done well in other places, and I can explain that, or if anyone else has. I think a standard process would be.
Right, I think it still boils down to us, what do we want, like, use the utility one, for example. Why do we want to continue to pay that out of?
When I, I would say just use. When I, I would say just use.
And make a list of what's utilities.
Right, so we need to sit down and have that conversation.
As far as our, you know, because they are all, I mean, they're going to do that. You look up utility vendor, you're going to see fifty-two hundred, fifty-three hundred, it's a.
Yeah, well, that's, that's a counter.
Certain, certain ones are separated out by state statutes that, that have to come out of certain channels.
Well, then you just need, you just need to provide us that state statute.
Well.
And we just need to have the funds.
Whether it's rock, it, it like, special bridge has state statute where you can only pull it out for bridge work and work around bridge work. Whether that, if you're contracting someone in or if you're just adding material like break wrap to it. But it still has to be able to hook back to that special bridge or I'm out of compliance by pulling out a.
So that's interesting. So you're not talking about just the fund. You're talking about that, say it's a grant and they say, we're only going to pay a certain amount for this bridge. You have to have every, every receipt or every coding tied to that project.
That would be if it was a grant, yeah.
So is that a fifty-three oh one A or would you, how?
That I think would be different because you're going to have your own fund.
Can I just make a suggestion? We need those, we need the statutes from each one of your departments. We need kind of the information from each one of your departments. And then we need to set up a work session so we can go through it instead of just sitting in a meeting and just, you know, because you understand what I'm saying, you're a hundred percent right. But I think if you had your information, you have your information, you have your information and you have the way we need to put it in there, we'll come to an agreement much sooner than what we're doing here.
Yeah, the goal is not to, yeah, the goal is not to micromanage each individual department's budget. The, the goal is to put you in charge of your budget and then, but at the end of the year, we can look back and say, oh yeah, these numbers need to change. This is why you justify a budget increase here and, and you know, it would, it'd be better information on the back end. So that's good work product, I think, especially for Red and Bridge, but everybody. I'm sure you did this during your, your budget cycle, but if you could just, if you know something that you need to be careful on, just write out all of the special funds and special projects that need to be coded in a cer- certain way on just kind of an outline form.
And we don't want to create line items for those. We want to do that with you. We're not going to do that without you. We need you to buy us to mean those statutes what you need to.
So I think at least take this week to gather that stuff up as a, as a week enough to kind of gather, compile some information or do you want two weeks? I just want to give you some time to compile whatever you need to bring to the table budget wise and your funds and all the necessary information. And then we can set a work session to figure it out. Two weeks, we're going to go. The majority wins.
So if we could, you guys are ungrants with that? Do you think that's a solid plan, given the two weeks to come up with all the information they need, statutes and everything in regards to their different funds and line items? It may not be all of it, but it'd be a good start.
Right.
And I'm sure there's going to be things that pop up.
Exactly. And then we set a work session.
Notes on your fund. So for continuity, when we're not here and the next person comes in, which notes on that fund is as by statute, this fund is used for this, this, this.
Yeah.
I, I just can't imagine that fifty-three hundred and fifty-two hundred, like a grant is going to say, well, maybe it does. You're, we're only paying a certain amount for contractual services.
Yeah, because some of them, some of them cover different costs throughout the project. Like they might not pay for preliminary engineering, just contract and service. But as the project moves on, they pay for the engineering to do the, just the hands-on.
Yeah.
The daily inspections. Then that covers that portion of it.
But if you were to just say, oh, I've got some money in my commodities portion of the grant, I'll just change this preliminary engineering to commodities, they would call you out on that, wouldn't they?
I, I imagine that if it got audited properly.
So I, I mean.
Just stay in the lane.
Yeah, just stay in the lane. And so fifty-three hundred, fifty-two hundred is not really what we're talking about. It's, we're more talking about what fund it comes out of and making sure we can match, run a report of all the expenditures related to this bridge. So that if we're asked by the state or whoever, feds, we can just, here you go.
Yeah, and not only that, the equipment fund and the bridge fund are ones that like you roll over and it, it doesn't affect those.
The total number next year.
Don't get taken away or anything. Those are, I don't know what you call it, like a cash fund or whatever. Because those monies.
Stay.
Don't ever get used out of them, but you don't ever get charged for that on the element.
Yeah.
So I say let's, let's set that. So two weeks, then we'll talk next week, get an update. And then we will set a work session so we can all sit down and kind of go through your guys' process, match it up to your guys' funds and the process, and then set something moving forward so that everybody's using the same things. Because I think that's, from what I'm hearing, that's the biggest issue. We just need to make sure we communicate to you guys, get everybody on the same page.
Okay? Are we talking about it next week or in two weeks?
Two weeks to have the, the, two weeks to get the information, yes. And I said we'll get an update next week and then we'll set some meeting that's two weeks from today. We'll set it on that day. No, you have two weeks to gather information and then we will set a meeting once you're ready. You have two weeks to gather information and then we will set a meeting once you're ready. If, if you come back in two weeks and say, man, this is hard, I've been digging, 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 I can't find it, then we're going to have some grace and we'll set the meeting accordingly. So I don't want to set it until everybody's comfortable that they have what they need. I want to make sure we go into this and everybody comes out feeling good about what we're doing.
Linda, do you think it's possible to, I don't know how far we're at as far as catch up on AP, but is there a report timeframe, maybe January through May or something, that we could just run the whole ledger for each department so that they can see fifty-two, fifty-three? And we can get some visibility on standardizing that?
Do you have the credit cards again?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just wanted to, I was trying to put a trial on it.
Yeah, let's.
Do you have credit card guidelines?
Well, we have some sort of, but we, we're working on the financial policies really that we still haven't.
We don't have any financial policies.
Approved, but.
I'd just like to make.
We don't have anything that really dictates what can be paid and what can't be paid with it. But in talking with you guys, I think I know where you're leading to because there are some things that obviously shouldn't be paid with it, especially if we're going to be invoiced for it. So if, I believe one of the ones was Navarax, we're invoiced for that one.
Utilities. Utilities.
Utilities, yeah, we should have, and those with the credit card. But the other thing that we talked about in that situation is we were kind of behind. So some of these folks probably paid for that, you know, to get it caught up.
Correct, which.
We've got to do it multiple times, whether like a check card or a non-check card or a phone bill.
Right.
We often pay with credit cards.
Right. And I think what Linda's trying to get at is moving forward, once we're caught up.
I think we're on a new trajectory right now where we can take these and keep going.
Yeah.
Would it be helpful to contact UMB to see if individual?
Yes, I would like to see.
If we can get individual bills sent to the department, is that going to be a problem for?
I actually thought there was supposed to be a login for each.
Yeah.
Was issued.
They said we don't have access to it.
So we can work on that.
Did have access until.
I say I think Matt had it when he was here and it was like.
Yeah.
And which was fine.
I don't know, it was history, they, I, I don't know. They did have access.
They were pulling up, they were coding, they're sending them in.
So Jeff, when he was here, he had access to his UOP card. And then it was in May or June of twenty-four when the access from the department stopped.
Did, was that brought out? I don't remember that being brought out.
Well, we first dawned, we got an E to N L C on our sales awareness, there was no issues.
Hold on just a second, say that again.
First started, that's how we did it.
So you got an email, you got an email that said your statement's available? Okay, and then you could log in and print it and do what you needed, okay.
Jeff's your stuff, we didn't see anybody else's stuff, it was just our statement. Then we reconciled, sent it to Michelle, we can take it there.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, I don't know, it just stopped, we don't ever have access. So it can be done, they've done it.
So something you reach out to and say, I think if they're recognized.
Three years, two, why?
Okay.
So when are you going to come out with them, could I start asking yours?
When do we get there? When do we get there? I'm not going to lie to you because we've been talking about this for three years.
Well, the biggest thing is, is some invoices slipped through and they get paid twice. And that's a nightmare, like, yeah.
Well, I think that discussion we'll have as you guys get further along in this new AP situation. I know you want it now, I get it, but we got to make sure everything's caught up. And then we'll work on the financial policy on this side. I've said that fifteen times, but I think we need to really put our foot down.
Yeah.
We're actively working on the handover with, you know, we're working credit card policies off of other counties and how they do. So that was just our last work session was a credit card. So you guys will be approving, I mean, essentially, you will be approving them, that's, I mean, obviously we don't. I say so, but there, there is a work of our own on handbooks, so that is.
At this point in time, are you guys comfortable not paying and bringing me your invoices for anything like Navarax or invoices that you would, that you would pay by credit card?
And I think those, that the people that were using the credit card for invoices were issues that were happening that were paid and was a show. So I don't think that was just, you're saying, oh, I got this invoice from Quo today and I'm, I feel like paying it sometimes.
We're not saying anybody's at fault, she's just asking the question of moving forward. Are you guys comfortable with doing that? Just bring Linda those invoices for Navarax, utilities, things like that, moving forward. We know where the fault lies, we're not going to hash that back out, we're, we're going to fix it.
I'm just saying that they're.
I know, that's, that's part of the conversation, that's what I'm hearing from it. So I just want to move forward and see if you guys are comfortable with that.
Well, I'm going to tell you that I don't get my invoices. I get an email of invoices, I used to get them in the mail. So if things aren't paid, it's not because of my not doing it.
I just said that, I, I get that, I get that, I understand.
You're always angry about it.
I'm not angry, I'm not talking about anybody's fault, so why are.
It's somebody's fault, but less.
We know that, but we're moving forward to fix it.
It's us.
No, I didn't.
And we have to correct it.
You know what, I'm done with that, I'm done with it. I seriously don't. Yes, I'm done with that. I'm not, I just said I'm not blaming anybody. So why aren't you getting your invoices by mail?
Because they were intercepted at some point and they go to Michelle. That wasn't me, I didn't call those companies and ask for that.
I didn't say again.
And when I came up here and talked last time, I tried to address that. And some things get overlooked and it's either, either getting overlooked or you just don't want to deal with it. And I don't know what that problem is. My communication with Michelle is not a problem. I don't have an issue communicating with her, but when the zills are going to her, that is a Michelle problem. That isn't all of our problems.
Yes, have I not been in a conversation with you constantly trying to fix this problem?
Can you send me which one you're not?
So that's enough, really.
So on the, the December second, so the December second, we're supposed to review and make sure everybody has had enough time to gather their information for moving forward with voucher process, for lack of a better term. Is that right?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hey, hold on.
Not being told to shut up.
I didn't tell you to shut up.
If you say it's enough, you tell everybody to move on.
Yes.
Just like with Sam, you're agreeing that Sam, so you're here, you're, you're here to fight off all the battles with Sam. Sam has not been into one person's office except Michelle's office. When he told you guys, or you told the commissioners in the meeting that he is working for every office, that is absolutely not true. He came down to my office and asked me last Friday after the meeting if I had anything that he'd fixed. I called Sunny, I got in trouble for using Sunny because of the invoice that was received by him. He came down, took my desk, my laptop off of my desk, moved it over to the GIS thing and he charged a hundred and ninety dollars and didn't even do what he said he was doing with the laptop. So then I called Sunny and I can't use Sunny anymore because that can't happen. So there's a lot of things that get a little frustrating when it's just a, it feels to me like it's one sided. It's not everyone else is in, but it's whatever you guys say is going to go, it's going to go. And then Sunny, I talked to Sunny personally and he said, I said, why would you want to come in this situation with how you was treating? And then he said, I want to help out the county. But Sam isn't here every day helping. He comes in, he says, I got ten minutes left and I'll see you next time I come in and I don't see him. So we're talking Century, Century, I was vetoed, whatever, they said that they didn't get anything. They sent all my VPN stuff to Sam to get my stuff fixed when I finally just emailed him automatically. Century had done like less than ten minutes. So it's stuff like that that's frustrating and working here. I'm just trying to be vocal without always looking like the psychopath in this place because I'm the only one who's speeding up.
And I'm glad you brought that up because I was going off information that I was given. And I talked to Sam and those guys absolutely, but you never reached out. And I would invite you to reach out and say, hey, Les, you said this in the meeting, but that's not entirely true. Here's the deal. What I get frustrated about is we pick these meetings to come in here and use that as the platform to bash everybody when it could just have been a phone call saying, hey, man, that's not entirely true.
I absolutely reached out to you, but it was after the incident, Patricia and I was in here and you didn't even answer me. And I was like.
I quit any emailing. You don't know how many times I've had to have Sunny in.
Yeah, I, and I responded to your, I didn't respond to yours for my own personal reasons. I was kind of miffed and I was very upset at what had happened in that meeting. And I didn't respond to you for that reason and that reason only. And that was one message that I'd never responded to you about. And I was very good at responding to your messages.
You did at first, but I quit.
Yeah, you quit, that's not my fault because I give you my opinion and what I think about it. And so then that wanted you to quit.
But Sunny.
Anyway, I do want you guys to visit about that. And if there is that big of an issue with Sam, W, those offices, I absolutely want to know about it because that's not what I'm being told. And so I would love to have that conversation.
Can we discuss that because I do not want to approve using Sam as the administrator? So I guess I do need to hear from you guys. I've already had two or three people reach out to me, but.
I don't, I don't know what the politics are as, I don't know what the, what the invoices, you know, all the invoicing. But in terms of someone that is responsive and knowledgeable and gets the job done, Sunny is the person that is consistently able to do that. When Century wasn't, the gentleman, Sam, I haven't met this gentleman. So in the Office of Economic Development, I'm still planning to use Sunny. And kind of want to continue to do that until we can demonstrate consistency with some other person if that's the direction we're moving in.
Yeah. And I want to go back to your point about the way Sunny was treated at first. I asked him and asked him and asked him for a contract. I just wanted a contract, whether it was with him or somebody else. And he kept putting me off, putting me off, putting me off. So I did what I thought was responsible. I stood up and said, we need to put into an RFP process. I had nothing against Sunny. It was not a personal deal. This county needs to be under protection of contracts for certain things that we have already seen in this year with IC issues. It's a very serious situation. I'm very glad to hear what you're saying about maybe not the responsiveness from Sam and I'll deal with that issue. I'm just glad you told me. And I apologized. You know how many times people reach out to me, want to chew my ass over something and I still get to sit and listen to it? And I do a good job of that. So I apologize if I led you the wrong way or made you feel like I wasn't listening. I apologize for that. So I, I would really like for you guys to reach out. I am going to make a statement right now. I think it's time I did this. I've served as the chairman for three years on this board. I appreciate. I want to put this right way. I appreciate the experience, I appreciate what I've been able to do here. Getting a little little smug for some reason. And I, excuse me, I love all you guys. Say something funny real quick. Anyway, I love all you guys. And when I got here, this place was a mess. I fought through it, you guys fought through it, I'm thankful for everybody that's stayed here. All the new people, everything. But as the chairman, it has become too much. I will sit in my remainder of my term, I will serve as the commissioner for this county, but I will not be the chairman. So I apologize for my emotional status, uh but at this time, I am tendering my resignation as chairman. So, it'll be up to the vice chair to set the next date, when you're gonna choose and reorganize, will reorganize, and you will be the acting chair in my absence. So with that said, uh and I'm not resigning chair because I'm upset you guys picked, I am upset for anyone. I'm not upset for reasons you might think. It's just... It's just, I don't usually get that emotional, but it's just become a lot, it's just become a lot. Uh so I still wanna serve in capacity, I still wanna help, but I think that you guys would be better led with someone that can give more attention to what we're doing, so. With that being said, uh I don't have a formal draft, I don't have nothing, but uh effective immediately.
I just wanted to say on behalf of the county, thank you. You have moved us through so many ups and downs, and we're all working through it, but your heart for the county has been tremendous, and your support for us. I'm so, moving through so many issues over the last year has been tremendous, I am so sorry that it's led you to this.
Still have that big heart for the county, still be fine, but at this time, I'd like to move to brief recess, ten minute. Thank you.
Sage County Commission Meeting. Okay, so just as vice chair, do we need to do anything official, or do we just carry out the rest of the meeting?
Carry out the rest of the meeting, carry on.
Okay, did we finish with everything with department head meeting?
I talked a lot, if, if the commissioners wanna hear any other thing, I think there's some work product you guys would like to see. The only other thing I could think of is just if, in your budgeting documents, you just have a, a basic idea of how you code things, probably helpful for Linda, Michelle, and the commissioners to know, here's my thought process. So not just the funds, but also just general approach to your stuff, and I think that that can flow back to them as well through the general ledger. Can we generate those reports and send just a sample? And then uh on the credit card deal, I think it was discussed that was actually part of the employee handbook. Maybe run whatever your favorite is on that by, by them and see what they, make sure it lines up with what we're picturing, you know?
Well, we've looked at Franklin County, Jefferson County, on what can and can't be. I think the biggest thing is following state statutes.
Sure.
There are statutes on what you can be spent, how you can't be spent, and if we are getting our bills paid the way that they need to be paid, then that will drop the issue that was going to put it in writing on, you know, on invoices.
Sure, if anyone wants to send, would this work for you guys, if anyone wants to send me examples of things you've consulted? Um I have policies as well, uh but I can put together a draft, it, it's not rocket science at the end of the day. You guys define what is the outer limits of public purpose. There's requests from community groups to fund, you know, I think, was there a hot air balloon thing recently or something?
Festival?
Yeah, that, I mean, there are fun things that the community does that, and you guys may say yes, you may say no. Um on credit cards, it's just articulating that beforehand, here's what we expect. Um some, and, and there are standard IRS guidelines on what travel meals count, or what can't be used on, you know, that type of deal. And then an, an upper threshold of how much you're gonna pay for those. So I'll, I'll create a, a draft and then circulate it internally with you guys, we can maybe talk about it once in executive session, and then if you wanna have discussions, you can.
And we've kind of wrote that down too with the travel, we had our meetings and stuff, within so many hours.
Distance from the courthouse.
The distance and how many hours you're gone, and then we kind of wrote that down too, to kinda...
Set some guardrails then.
Yeah, yeah, guidelines and stuff to make it easier to explain, and you know exactly where to fall, because you're gonna actually have to ask the commissioner to do the travel anyway. And so, here's what your guides are, why you're out and gone, what is covered meal wise.
Because a lot of times, if you're going to a conference, and especially if you're staying at a conference, and your lunch is included, so you shouldn't be going and buying lunch or coffee when you're at a conference, all of that is included. If you're staying at a hotel, usually, your breakfast is included.
Yeah, well, it's important to have some guardrails there, so just so the optics of things don't look... The only other thing I would say is that do not uh discount the power of a memo to file. So if you gotta have an explanation for something, and you wanna just email yourself and submit it with the voucher, so that, because when I fulfill public, uh open records requests, and all of these are generally, I mean, everything is open, except maybe firewall type vouchers. I can't think of much, any other types of things. If you have an explanation, contemporaneous, contemporaneous explanation, it'll save you a lot of heartburn for later and six months later. And even if it's like an accidental, logged into the wrong Amazon account, and, you know, you rent Moneyball on, on the county deal.
Just tell the story, just tell your story.
No, this is completely hypothetical.
Okay.
Then it's just a two ninety-nine check, not that you do it again, but two ninety-nine check to the county to reimburse, and so the count, the credit card company gets, you know, uh one check for two ninety-nine and the rest is the county, so it's, it's just like running. $2.99, and the rest is the county. So it's just like running...
But it sounds like with AP being caught up more in a timely turnaround, that using the credit card will be less often. And so paying some of those invoices and things won't, that won't need to occur, which will help make the credit card bill smaller and more manageable.
Yeah, more specialized.
The other thing besides memo files, I was gonna say, is just take a picture if you can't get a receipt. If for some reason the receipt printer at the gas station on travel doesn't work, just take, pick anything you can do to document the legitimacy of the expense and submit that with it. But every line item on the credit card should have some vendor-specific thing. And if it doesn't, every once in a while, you can't get Adobe to send you a specific, you know, invoice, because they won't do it or whatever. Write a memo, like one sentence memo to file, email yourself. This is what it was for. Use the card. I'm asking for the county to...
And that makes our job so much easier, because whenever there's that paper trail, it just, you may read something on the bill report and go, that looks weird. You look at the receipt, and you're like, oh, that makes perfect sense. So all of that documentation's really, really important. Helps us do our job. Okay, anything else? Any questions for us? With BT and Co., it sounds like we're gonna do like every other week, they'll kind of give us an update of what they've progressed on, on kind of what their to-do list were. If there's something slowing them down, we'll try to come up with solutions to help move forward on that. But they're working on both fronts, whether it's the payroll side or AP side, and getting things accurate and reconciliations and that sort of thing.
And continue to share your observations or concerns or whatever that you have.
Yes.
And you can speak to, you can speak to us, just don't speak to us all at once.
If they, just in terms of, you know, working on those statutes and those things, and there's so many department heads, within that two weeks, if somebody gets all their statutes and everything together, and they want to talk to Michelle and I and look at their ledger, because it is kind of a one-on-one thing, so you can't help tempting people to...
Yeah.
If somebody got that first, can we go ahead and work with that person?
Sure, start building a...
That department and look at their ledgers and go over their statutes and do all that.
Start building it and see what, yeah. Because you might find a...
If anybody gets...
You might find a hurdle. Yeah, you might find a hurdle with one person that would apply it out to everybody else or something, yeah.
Or was that a meeting that everybody needed to be all together and not one?
I think ultimately commissioners, you're gonna get a vantage point of how things are being done. But this is the, this is the hard work that goes into the ultimate audit recommendations. You know, two years later, when we're reading something about something in generic accounting legalese or whatever, this is what it means. It's just, we need to be, get our data to have integrity, and it's got integrity. We just need to standardize it. You're gonna get caught up in some...
Yeah, because it does have a nice feature. You can't put that statute in there, like show us quite a few that we know.
Yeah.
Or attorney to what we know.
Or a flag, I mean, for a grant, like, yeah. Every good accounting software has the ability to just add infinite flags, and then you run a report off of that flag.
Yeah.
Very good.
Anything else? Any other questions? All right.
Thanks again, everybody, for your involvement in, you know, concerns and patience and all that.
All right. Okay. Oh, she left. Michelle left. Okay, and Chris? Is Chris out there anywhere? I'm sorry, what? Okay, well...
He was just out there. I'll go grab him.
Okay, we might take care of his first. We'll do yours. I mean, you've been here for a while. We'll do yours. Because we've got several other things, so we'll do yours now. I just need to know the exception and the topic. Do I need anything more specific? Non-elected personnel?
Non-elected personnel, topic being payroll, jobs, recruitment.
Is that...
What? Getting closer. Updates on existing county workforce issues.
Sure.
Great. I get paid by the word. Paid by the word?
Well, you're gonna repeat that here in a second.
Okay.
How much time do you need?
Fifteen minutes.
Okay. So I'd move that we recess to executive session under the following exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act pursuant to non-elected personnel matter for the topic of...
Updates on non-elected personnel issues from the...
Workforce issues.
Workforce issues.
For a matter of fifteen minutes, returning at 11:25.
Yep.
To include all three commissioners, Chris Wells and Josh and I.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. ...
I, no action taken, but I do move to extend for a matter of, what'd they say?
Just at least five.
For a matter of five minutes, returning at eleven thirty-seven, eleven thirty-eight, under the same terms and with the same individuals.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Carries. Yeah. Thank you.
So I've fallen down, dropping the ball, chilling out, so I appreciate everything you're doing. I'm done.
Oh, you're leaving.
I have to get back to work. See ya.
See you.
Josh, what's your time line?
Um, let's start triaging some stuff. Election canvas. Can we do that?
Yes, not on here, but can we just, or do I need that?
Thank you. Uh, I guess you all already certified the results, but do you want to review them and just confirm that those are the one and the same? I don't think there are any ties that we need to resolve. The only ties were just Washburn Rural and.
So this was printed out after the ballots were added?
Yeah, so the data issues were resolved last night and Michelle was able to create this report. And so that would be the results you're certifying.
And there weren't any ties after that?
There were ties, but they weren't, they were only partial districts.
Okay. Oh, yes. Okay. So, but this was what was approved then?
It was already approved. I just wanted to give you guys a chance to see it. Ratify, maybe a motion to ratify and certify the results that were certified last night.
Okay. So I make a motion today?
Yeah, motion to ratify and certify, recertify the results as they were certified last night as they are presented on this abstract.
I'm gonna try to say that. So I would move to approve that we ratify and certify the report presented, which includes what was approved last night. I didn't say that right at all.
The certified last night.
What was certified last night?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
So I don't know if you want to, do you want them to initial the bottom of that, Michelle?
You want us to sign this somewhere? Both of us?
For posterity.
Do we need to date it at all?
Sure.
Well, do you need sign off on this too?
What date is that?
It says eleven eighteen on there.
Yeah, so date it today.
Do you need sign off on this too as well, or?
You're my proxy. I am your counselor.
Yeah.
Advocate.
Okay. Since Linda's here, can we do the executive session with her? And after that, it looks like we have to.
Michelle, do you need anything else for today? Are those letters are gonna go out?
I just have to have these.
Oh, insurance canceling.
Oh, yeah.
Deal signed and then the twenty twenty-four audits. Resolution of acceptance for Lloyd Group.
So Lloyd Group is wanting to start the twenty twenty-four audit?
If it is engagement letter.
I think it is. So on the, on the terminations, it has Les as chairman. He's not here. Do you need action from them? Or can you just send it under your signature with a?
Well, I put it on our letterhead through Commissioner, but when the original today had sent me, they had my signature on it.
So I would just say have them approve it and then just say.
And what are they? I guess I'm not familiar with.
So we went to the state health plan.
It's just.
We need to terminate our.
Terminating Blue Cross and all that stuff.
So, but what you just said.
This is something else. I'm gonna let you hold that.
She can.
That's Fran's.
Okay, that's Fran's.
What you just said was that the clerk has authority to sign off on that?
Just, yeah.
And we just approved it, yeah. Gotcha.
You give her authority to send those letters.
Yeah, so one is to Etna. One is to a sales manager for Health Equity. One is to Jeremy Ignoto at Blue Cross of Shield. And one is a Cobra Guard.
Okay.
And they each say a similar thing. I'm writing to request termination of our group vision plan effective the first, the HSA and FSA contract.
First of next year.
I'm sorry, first of twenty-six.
Yeah, gotcha.
The termination of group health and dental insurance through Blue Cross effective January first, twenty twenty-six. And request termination of Cobra Services effective twenty twenty-six. So the motion could be to approve the clerk to sign these. Is that what you said? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Yes, to approve her signing those on behalf of the county.
On behalf of the county, okay. So I would move to approve the insurance termination letters sent to Etna, Cobra Guard, Jeremy Ignoto at Blue Cross, and Katie Hyde.
Yeah, sure.
At Health Equity to sign, for Michelle Morse to sign these letters on behalf of the county.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
And this is the one that Frank needed to sign.
Okay. Last week Fran brought, it is a, I think it's a letter of support, yeah. It's a letter of support of a grant application. The Osage County Board of County Commissioners governs the general public transportation program. Board of County Commissioners fully supports the grant application of the Osage County General Public Transportation to the Kansas Department of Transportation for operating assistance to provide transportation services to Osage County of all ages. To whom it may concern, we, the Board of Osage County Commissioners authorize Frances Dieters to sign on behalf of the Osage County Public Transportation for the fifty-three eleven program grant application.
Well, I knew that the Commissioners authorize Fran to sign on behalf of the Osage County Public Transportation.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
The only.
I do think that has to be signed by Commissioner though.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It does have a different.
It's got Les's name. Do you want me to sign it, or do you want her to stamp it? Or doesn't matter?
No, you scratch it out, right? Have a cooter, Vice Chair. And if you want to, before, well, I don't think it'll matter with these people, but.
She signed the last one, so it's what Fran said, don't we go?
Okay. It's a specific one that she, I mean, it's to give her.
Yes. I'm gonna use it and then break it, just like I tell others.
That's my, that's good pen.
Yeah, yeah. The engagement letter? This is from the Lloyd Group. I'm sure it's standard to previous years. I would open and entertain the idea to possibly receive other candidates.
And this is for?
This is for the twenty-four audit.
What would be the, are there any drawbacks to opening up to other auditors, or?
I don't think so. I've been trying, I mean, each year, not first year, second year, but in the last couple of years, I would like to, you know, have an RFP put out and seek some other candidates. I think it's good to rotate. I think he's been doing it over twenty-five years. And we might be able to get some recommendations through BT and Co. They would not be able to do that, but they would probably know firms that might be able to. So that's my.
As long as we don't have a timeframe, it wouldn't hurt to see another, I mean, you know, see another, uh, bid.
Is that something, can you write, would you think we should do an RFP? Or do you think we should reach out to BT and Co. and get some names, or?
If, you can do either. RFP wouldn't hurt. It'd just kind of delay things. I don't know what the timeframe is at this point, but we're kicking that off now. So I can add that to my list if you want to consider RFP next week.
That's my preference with Brandon Winter.
How does that affect what we're trying to endeavor with our, with trying to get set up for twenty twenty-six?
I'm not against changing things up every once in a while, but I think that we're in a state right now that if we move away from someone that knows the history and knows how things have been, we extremely definitely will have a huge setback.
And I have some papers here to back that up.
To, to, sorry, what'd you say?
I have some papers here to think that would back up what she's saying.
Oh.
I mean, not that in the future, for seeing, no, whatever change comes up, that's, I think with that, but to stay diverse still in right now, I think it's gonna be a good handful of years before I can say that it would probably be okay unless it's all way back.
Would it be helpful to go into executive session on, I don't know what Linda's executive session was for, but we can just add that as a discussion. So maybe, uh.
So originally we had a twenty-minute executive session for attorney-client privilege. I don't, I didn't have a topic.
Topic would be county financial policies and compliance.
County financial compliance and?
Financial policies and compliance. And I'd ask for five minutes to start with, well, we'll start with just the Commission and me. I have a related issue that's not this. I just need to talk to you really quickly about, and then we'll bring them in.
Okay. So I would move to approve, sorry, I'm just gonna read it in so much easier. I'm just gonna leave this open. I move that we recess to executive session under the following exceptions to the Kansas Open Meetings Act pursuant to attorney-client privilege with the topic of county financial policy and compliance for a matter of five minutes, returning at eleven fifty.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I'll be quick.
Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion. Okay, I would move to approve that we extend the executive session under the same terms for a matter of five minutes, returning at 12:18. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion.
No action taken in executive session. I move that we recess to executive session under the following exceptions. The Kansas Open Meeting Act pursuant to attorney-client privilege for the topic of...
Ongoing.
Ongoing. What was the word?
Legal compliance.
No. What was the term of ongoing? Ongoing legal compliance. For a matter of 10 minutes, returning at 1:00 PM.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
We'll move out and get to the door.
Returning at what time?
1:00.
No action taken in executive session. We do have an item. In regards to the credit cards. We would, the commission would like the credit card bills from any company that we have used from May. Is that right, Brandon? That's May of '24?
2024, yeah.
From May of 2024 through current, any credit card bills. We would like to direct Michelle and Linda, whoever has access to those, and submit those to BT and Co. And the purposes of that is to get them coded correctly, have them reviewed for public purpose, and a summary recommendations to get them resolved and entered into CIC. So with that discussion, Brandon, do you have anything to add to that?
I don't think so.
So do I need to put that in a motion?
Sure.
So I would move to approve directing Michelle Morris or Linda Smith to submit all credit card bills from any company from May of 2024 through current to BT and Co.
All right, is that the end of it?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. The only other thing I have on here was I had visited with Michelle Rooks about if we have a deadline for submissions for the appraiser position. So I know, I think she had one applicant, there might have been a couple others, but I asked her to let us know. We need a deadline of when we're going to consider those and move on that so we can get someone appointed. So I'm gonna see if Michelle's available. She was gonna come in and tell us what she had. Is that okay?
You had some other, you had a few resumes anyway, didn't you, scattered around? Okay.
In regards to an appraiser that we need to appoint starting January of '26, right?
Yes. That's what we need to be. I think that I have one applicant that I gave you guys. I'm not sure if it's indeed, I may, I didn't see those so far.
Because I believe we had a position, we opened... Cause I believe we had a position, we, we opened it up.
I think it was Friday.
The fourteenth?
Yeah. And then, um, I haven't gotten any feedback from that, but we, Matt has been working with me and we've got everything done. Um, for the points, uh, extended deadline we have for the fifteenth and then December one, we'll have some more. Matt suggested that we get someone as soon as we can and then he will have to do that this number one, but he's willing to do it. That's a good one, but, so, um, and I think June everyone's one of the plus. All the other items on that, I think they'd be done only be in place. So as soon as we can get them in, um, I did tell Anna I thought that interviews were gonna be set up for like the Tuesday.
What date, which, what date?
Um, what is, next Tuesday, I think is what we said initially.
December second? Do we need to move it to the ninth, or do you think we can? Are there any other applicants? Any other, did anything come to you?
I told you that we had, we have a schedule as to when things will happen. I don't have it in writing.
What do you mean, when things will happen?
Uh, when they have to be submitted, when they will be reviewed, when they will be available for interviews.
Okay, so do you have those resumes you can forward to us? Okay. What date would you like to interview them, or, or do we just need to start with reviewing that resume?
Oh, yeah, review the resumes, weed it out to a couple if you wanted to have an interview or two or whatever, but, uh, when was, uh, when was our, what's your target date that we need, gotta have? I mean, we wanna have somebody in position.
I can settle with Matt and make sure I give you the correct date, cause I don't want to just throw a date out.
Sure, yeah.
I will be done with being appointed.
Sure, yeah, definitely by then.
So we'll all, yeah, by then. So I would assume that the, as soon as you guys can be as far as that. Um, I'm not sure how many elements were, but.
So would it work to put it on for next week? If you can, I know you gave me that copy, but if you have electronic form, can you forward it to me again? And then Michelle, if you had any come in, if you'll forward those to us and then we could consider them next week? Would that work, Brandon?
Yeah, what's the, what's the date next, what are we, where are the, that'd be the?
Oh, I said December second, I was wrong. It's Thanksgiving.
Twenty-fifth?
The twenty-fifth, I'm sorry.
No, it's a day, I was like.
I don't wanna skip Thanksgiving, so the twenty-fifth.
Okay. To review resumes?
Yes.
Okay.
And then if we would, and then we could decide after.
Right, make a decision based on whatever we have.
And then hopefully we could, if whoever we choose would be available, kind of get here mid-December maybe, and get a couple weeks prior to the first of the year.
Yeah, and they should know, I know it's just over time for appraisers anyway, but, uh, Anna has the, it's.
Yeah, you could submit that to us again. I know you gave it to me, but I don't know where it's at, and if you could send it electronically.
Yes, I'll, Brandon, you open it up to you.
If you, if you're going to it, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I think that was it. That was last on my list here.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I talked with you guys, if you ran out of stuff, I know it's one ten, but, um, we can put it on a different meeting or take it up today. Um, talked to you last night about the proposal. My contract was up in December of last year, and I've just kind of gone on that same one, but that was with our partnership, which is no longer a partnership, cause Ryan's moved on to be US Attorney. And so in reviewing kind of whether to, you know, as our rate, rates go up, just with market, market rates and whatnot, um, in lieu of proposing a contract, um, with those additional hourly rates, I'd propose to just move to kind of a flat fee and actually move to a salary to become an employee, county counselors like city attorneys, city prosecutors, county attorneys, other official appointed positions that are, are attorney positions within government, um, are officials, uh, and so I think that there's some guidance that those are more properly, you know, treated as employees because I have separate duties that affect the, the public versus, you know, someone you would hire to defend you in a lawsuit or something like that. Um, and so looking at the requests for some added hours, uh, going forward, I know there's requests from, um, for grant help on, from economic development and other things. I've kind of arrived at a proposal for a seventy-one thousand, two hundred, uh, dollar salary, um, just onboard me as an employee. I wouldn't need benefits. But that is, was arrived at after kind of taking into account the additional employer FICA costs that, and capers costs. I calculated my hourly rates of around eighty-three thousand, five hundred, as far as the amount. But I would be willing to cover your portion of the FICA and just lower that salary down.
So do you have something, like you can, a proposal that's already written, or that we could do today? Or do you wanna just send it to us this week and we can put it on for next week?
Well, I don't know if you want a written proposal, but it's really just a proposal for a salary amount.
At that rate? Okay. With no ben, with no ben, no?
I would not add, I don't know if I'd be benefits eligible or not, but I would not need benefits. It would just be the employer related and the capers contribution that I discounted that eighty-three, five, and then down to seventy-one, two.
So it's a salary excluding the health insurance benefits essentially, right?
Yeah. You'd have increased costs associated with employer share, FICA, employer share, capers, but that's where I get the reduction of fourteen.
When would that take effect? Just twenty, twenty-six?
I'd ask for it to be effective, and Michelle, I don't know payroll cycles, but I'd ask for it to be effective, um, for the first paycheck that hits and, so maybe even like December fifteenth or something. Is there any issue onboarding? It's just a payroll change format, I assume.
We've discussed it.
We've discussed it multiple times, so I'm, I'm fine. You wanna make a motion on that?
Not today.
Do you need, uh, sorry, here, payroll proposal, salary proposal, do we need that in some type of writing to vote on it officially? Are you looking for a consensus today, or what do you need?
I, I'm happy to write an email that just says I'd propose to move to a salary position. But I think that it's really just a request as a contractor to I'd send you a firm engagement letter there, or terminate the contract with the firm and then I'd just come in-house. But frankly, when we started this contract in twenty twenty-two, I think we anticipated Ryan covering some. John has been, Caleb Krip was here for a while, but for the last two years, it's been completely mine.
Yeah. I mean, what could, just approve those terms today, and then if you wanna submit something that just goes in your employee file or something?
Sure.
I, I'm fine with approving that today. We've talked about it multiple times.
Yeah. All right, so make a motion to accept, right, the?
To convert Josh and I to an employee, county counselor to an employee position at the salary of seventy-one thousand, two hundred is what I'm requesting.
And that's all over.
But I don't wanna push you into, I mean.
Do we need to have a term limit on that, or just, just a salary position up until we decide what you're doing?
There's no terms, uh, for county counselor. I've been serving county counselor since twenty thirteen, I think, at different companies. Didn't expect local government to be my wheelhouse, but somehow became it.
Okay, so that was my motion. Right, you, you got that, Michelle?
Did you get that, Michelle?
Okay, makes sense, clear as mud? Perfect.
So I would second that. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
And if you could, I guess, write something up so it makes it look official.
Yeah, just something that goes in the file that summarizes.
I'll do, what I'll do is a firm letter that will terminate the contract in lieu of the appointment as an employee.
Perfect.
Okay. All right, so it looks like last thing, we have approval of minutes and approval of bills.
So, you see these?
What is this?
Those are minutes. For approval.
Yeah, so I wasn't
Right.
here, so that would be one change.
This is, I think, correct. I don't think we need to fix this on the.
Yeah, that's right. I just wasn't here.
Okay. Oh, was that what you just asked?
Yeah. Yeah. You could say the type, topic, if you wanted to be more specific.
Oh.
So.
Yeah.
With the topic of financial affairs. For justification of confidential, confidentiality data and trade secrets with the topic of financial affairs.
Require anything?
Here?
Yeah, do we need to do anything?
You, you approved, oh, you probably do need to do that.
I don't think we need to take action on today.
Yes, if you don't wanna do that.
Sounds like we're unable to.
Oh, that's a different one.
There were more developments after that, but.
Oh. Okay, did you read the next one? I had it mixed up.
So who's and what's?
Okay. I was looking at this one. We had two.
Yeah.
Okay, one of them. I don't, this looks like a duplicate. Didn't we have one with Chris and, did Colleen have two separate ones?
Yeah, Chris down there.
Yes. This is the one that, this is backwards. This is the one with the evergy, so this needs to say it's not under financial affairs. It was this as the exception, and that's the topic. That's backwards.
Just backwards, it's the same thing.
Okay, so we gotta swap that.
Michelle, um, while they're working on that, it's tie vote in council member city of Mount Melbourne. The third, uh, position was tie of four and four between Frank War and Jerry Beaman. Um, can we just give note, notice that we'll, um, determine by law which person is elected at the next meeting? And just tell them both if they wanna attend, they can. Of course, the public can too. But that would be pursuant to KSA twenty-five dash three, one, zero, eight. I'll send you that statute. You probably have it. And we're meeting on Tuesday of next week?
Yes.
Got the corrections pinned ready, Michelle? Or the?
Do what?
You got the correction pinned, or the, the?
For minutes, they have a few corrections.
Yeah, or amendment pinned or whatever.
Whatever you.
Sure.
I can do it.
You can't, I can't even read them right.
Do you have any lessons pinned?
You don't have a pen on there?
I lose them like there. Okay, first.
Will you, so, will we need to resend?
Yeah, that won't be a correction to me, that's.
Right, so the next one is the correction I saw was that the sessions where you were not attending, that one, the first one there.
Okay.
And on the second one, it appears that the reason and topic are just went through backwards. They just need to be. Confidential data, you know what I mean? Who's the two that I saw?
Do you have any extras on yours?
I think it was just the same things, taking his name off and then correcting the.
Swapping those.
Yes, swapping those two.
All right, so for both executive sessions, Commissioner Cooter moves to approve entering an executive session for twenty minutes under justification of confidential data or secrets regarding topic of financial affairs, including commissioners. under justification of confidential data or secrets regarding topic of financial affairs, including commissioners.
And Colleen.
And Colleen. Second one would be economic development. Colleen Mendoza, thirty minutes of financial affairs. Commissioner Cooter moves to approve entering into executive session for thirty minutes under justification of confidential data or secrets regarding topic of financial affairs, including Brandon Sack and David Norton, Colleen Mendoza and commissioners in the EcoDevo room. Commissioners seconded passes two to zero. Let me make sure, Michelle. So that's for the... And then you directed me last week over the jury trial on that Wednesday, but you directed me last week to send obligation non-renewal to Century. There was a motion today to appoint Helix to do that, died for lack of second. Do you still want me to send that non-renewal? What is the plan for?
I don't think we can do that with recent developments.
Okay.
I don't think we can take action on that.
So I would probably need you to just direct me today, since it was a motion, move to basically rescind that direction.
Okay, so I would move move to approve that we rescind the motion to direct Josh to
Yeah.
Send the non-renewal to Century.
Just rescind the direction.
Uh huh, rescind the direction.
I'm sorry, what did you?
You're not rescinding, the motion was made to pass, but.
You're pointing to something.
Yeah, uh, I'll pass that one.
Oh, here, you do it.
My recommendation would be a motion to rescind the direction to County Councilor Josh and I regarding non-renewal of Century's contract.
So move.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries.
The last question I'd have for you on that is, is there anything you want to set for future agendas discussion regarding IT, there's a lot of opinions from a lot of different department heads. I think some of them were planning on reaching out directly to Les and to you individually.
Would it be, uh...
How do we solve the problem?
I would say, would it be logical to have a invite Century to come down for a meeting? If for nothing else, then at least a wrap-up session, you know? Is that doable? Does that make sense?
Yeah, 'cause I think that depending on how we move forward, if we end up staying with them for a year, I don't know.
Yeah.
That maybe, some people today said they had used them and it did work, other people said they had some issues, and maybe let them talk with Century about that to resolve some of those if we end up using them for another term. So we probably should.
But, yeah. So who'd like to, do we need to direct anybody to contact them or?
I can.
Or put them on the agenda or?
Yeah, if you'll tell me what date you'd like them here, I'll reach out and contact Michelle about what date they confirm. Do you want to try to do it next week or do you want to try to do it December second? Department heads are not coming in December second.
They are not.
So they may want to attend if you get on the agenda early enough. And the other question is whether to have Sonny and Helix here or just field general questions and just have a big tent IT discussion.
Sure wish I knew more about IT.
Do you want me to invite just Century or all three of them?
Um... I don't know if all three at one time would be a good idea. I don't know. I don't know if it's good just to let Century.
We're not making any contract decisions that day, I don't think. You know what I mean? I think we would just be, uh... Catching up.
Touching base.
Okay.
See what we need to do.
I'll return about next week and if that doesn't work, December second. Yeah, because what we find out might direct our following discussion the next week.
Yes. The only other thing is, do we have to do any, if Les is not chairman, do we have to do anything with that or can we just finish out the year as is?
Um, I think you can finish out the year again, too.
Well, I mean, I think there's enough references to chairman that you would at least want to ratify an acting chairman between the two.
Okay.
Is that to be done today? Is that something?
I would say yes. Just, I mean, just for purposes of next week, there's enough references in statutes and resolutions and administration and all of that that I wouldn't need to not have a chair for the ability, so.
Okay.
You could just say acting chair until revisiting.
Yeah, till the end of the year, because reorganization, well, till reorganization.
Since Les isn't wanting to do it.
Well, yeah, would he need to have a letter? I mean, also for record or do we just minutes would reflect it?
The minutes will reflect it, and I think if you can just, the minutes should reflect at least a approval of one of you as acting chair.
Okay. Well, I would make the, make the motion, I move that, uh, that the vice chair fills out the term as acting chair.
Until next reorganization.
Until reorg, until reorganization.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. No, we just have bills. Is this a duplicate page or is this different? Oh, different ones. Let me have a look in at this row. Is this the duplicate duplicate? This one, am I reading it wrong? Eleven ten, eleven seven, eleven ten, eleven ten, eleven seven, eleven ten. Are they different amounts? I don't know. That looks the same. This one, I think.
Same transaction date?
Well, these are different. These are different invoice dates. So that's the same amount but not a duplicate and this is two eighty-one, ten thirty, ten thirty, ten thirty, ten thirty, eleven ten. That looks like a duplicate.
Could be.
Is there a possibility this is a duplicate?
Oops.
It looks like they just stapled them together.
Oh, on the book design?
Okay, yeah, it was stapled together, so I would just, okay, so that is, it's just a duplicate page. Well, it can't be just duplicate though, 'cause this is different. This has eleven eighteen.
Check the actual signature pages and see what that is.
This is the one you've been looking at, is it now?
Oh.
Make sure it's official, official?
Oh, I pulled this off of my stack. Okay, then let me start over. What's the total on that? Twenty, do you have, yours is twenty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-two.
We just need to make sure that only signs.
I think the way that it came out of the deal print, it stapling it, it just stapled two together.
I have two of four, three of four, three of four. I don't have one of, I don't have one of four, so I'll have to look at that one. I don't have the...
Like a well machine, right?
Yeah, like it just didn't divide it or something. Okay, so we've got that. Okay. That's one of four, two of four. That's a duplicate. Three of four, that's a du, oh, it's also a duplicate, okay. So how do we want to do this? 'Cause there's a duplicate in here.
There just should be all of them.
It is, but it's duplicate. So there's the, here's one. And there's two, here's three, there's four. Just take this one out.
Is that one still unsigned by Josh?
Okay, okay.
Once again, wonders of technology, right?
I don't know why it does it sometimes. Tell it to make three copies, it'll
Yeah.
print one page three times and staple it, I don't know why.
Yeah, how it co, coalesces it.
It's probably operator error then.
Well, that's what I was blaming on, at my place.
Okay, so I'm going to staple this. There's that, okay. Okay. So I would move to approve paying the bills for the bills for eleven eighteen, twenty twenty-five in the amount of twenty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
That was easy, you even had the right paper to sign it that way.
Yeah, and I was just signing in wherever, in oblivion.
It's really warm down, you're in.
I know, I got my heater on, I gotta shut it off. Okay. I did have one question with capers. For people that are retiring, there's one person that reached out to me that's retiring in December. Is there any way to expedite getting her caper data to them so that she can get her numbers that she needs? Has she reached out to you?
Got it.
Okay. Okay. All right, um, so if I give you her information, can you work on her stuff to get to capers?
If you try to, usually there's all as a whole payroll, I can't, they can choose.
I don't know what that's going to do for people that need to, that are retired, and I don't know if there's...
Well, I think BT and Co. said that they was, that was one of their priorities.
Yeah.
So hopefully. Hopefully we'll know something by.
Next week.
Next week.
Okay, all right. I believe that is everything. Do you have anything else?
I don't know, I don't think so. I was trying to go through the scribbles here and I think they're all checked off, but I'm...
Yeah.
Michelle, did we miss anything?
Michelle, do you have anything?
I was trying to just do this and see if we signed these minutes.
Okay, sorry. Oh yeah, I guess we forgot about that. That was a long time ago, you know, how, I wish.
And we decided, on the BT and Co., it's biweekly and we did, we picked ten o'clock? Does that sound right? I thought I wrote it down.
Yes.
And I can't find it, I swear I wrote ten.
Uh, yes, the second at ten, I think.
Okay.
That, that was a long time ago, Heather?
Yes, and I wrote it down somewhere and it's not on here. Sure it's on one of these other pages. Well. Hmm. Healthcare, why is healthcare calling? Okay. Oh, you gotta take, oh no, that's fine, never mind.
This is the one?
Sorry, it's this one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He's, he just kept sitting down.
Oh, that's, that's duplicate.
Financial affairs.
Minutes for confidential trade secrets, under justification of financial affairs, not, it's duplicate.
The topic would be financial affairs.
We'll just cross it off and then. No, that's, this one didn't get corrected. Okay. Did he, did he give you the written? Did Josh give you the written?
Yeah, it's down there somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then put it here by, convert it.
Yeah, just on both of these. I think both, this one didn't get corrected, but if you'll just correct us with whatever we wrote, then we'll just do those next week. So, Commissioner Cleaver proves entering executive session for twenty minutes with confidential, yeah, confidential data and trade secrets under the justification of financial affairs. This got duplicated. And it should be financial affairs. Right, financial affairs, was that it? And then that would just need to be duplicated in that one. This one still says, uh, under topics of financial affairs referred to, that's backwards.
It's, yeah, it's all right, it's just backwards.
But I'm needing to go. If you, we'll submit those next week. Okay, do you have anything else? Okay, do you have anything else?
I don't, is that?
Okay. I was asking, she'll just, she'll correct that and just submit them next week, and we'll finish it then.
Okay.
So I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries.